And you'll notice Linder's, obviously, compared to the state, different schools in the state and different schools across state does a good job as well. One of the things, I believe it was two years ago, the Department of Education did not want us publicly comparing our town to neighboring towns. It's very easy to do. We obviously do it in behind the scenes. It's just good to see. It's all out there and to be reported, so it's not like something you can't figure it out. But it's something that really frowned upon us doing. All right, now I see a comparison of Linder's spring 2016, 2017, and 2018 park administration. So basically what we did is we took the last three years and we showed students in Level 1 not meeting expectations, Level 2 partially meeting, Level 3 approaching, Level 4 meeting, and Level 5 seeing. And again, you'll see a lot of these scores, the percent difference from... Yeah, from 17 to 18, you'll see a large percentage increase. 12.4, I'm just having trouble seeing this far away. 11.8, 11.9, no change. 19.4 in 7th grade, game. 8th and 9th, a little bit of a negative number there. Plus 9.7 is actually on the line, and minus 2.6 on the line. So again, all these numbers will be on the website for you to view. And please, you'll see our email addresses. And if you have any questions about how we came up with these numbers, they come directly from the state. Is it possible that we made a mistake? It's a small chance sometimes when your chance to make things over, but we looked at it a number of times, and it's just the numbers that are giving us. This is a comparison of our buildings. You'll see this is color-coded. Again, you're gonna have probably some trouble seeing it from your seats, but we color-coded the Memorial, Lincoln, Jefferson, Roosevelt, LHS, and the state. So you'll see the orange bar and bar graph is the state. And you'll see we did them state in a lot of areas, and some areas we need to keep doing better than we're already doing. So that's on there as well. We compare ourselves amongst ourselves, as well as the state. All right, ELA trends. This is just some information. I think this is important. I think this is actually more important than looking at the numbers in this setting. Like I said, the report's gonna be on the website for you to look at. If you want to see how your child was graded, how their school did, if they had a specific question that maybe we didn't put in here, just ask us, and you'll see our emails up there. So basically, in 2018 test administration, every test at grade level had an average, a higher average skill score compared to the New Jersey and across states. Every grade except 9th and 11th had a large percent of students who were college or career-ready, which is Level 4 and 5 by the state. More than half the grade levels increased the number of students who are college or career-ready. So college or career-ready, you get a 4 or 5. That's basically what the criteria is for that. Many students at the high school left courses on the test blank, and it appears they did not even attempt to respond. So again, that's something that I, you know, I'm just gonna say in public, I really don't, I think, I'm just gonna say that, you know, the state has not given us the best guidance that they could in that area in terms of acting out or refusal. I mean, to me, you know, it should be very easy. We have to take the test. Again, we have, we've got some parents, some very good friends of mine, you know, personally, or let's say in Linder's don't want their children to take the test, and I totally understand. I have a lot of issues with certain things too, as a parent, but maybe are different than what I do at work. But again, it's something we have to deal with. Sometimes the results are skewed for those reasons, especially when you get into the upper grades. And if you don't believe me, look at some of the districts in Bourbon County and how somebody's scores are.
A lot of high school students also were finding, as we meet with other districts, well, it's the students that know that they met their graduation requirement, and they sit, and they're gonna take the test, they just don't take that test seriously. So it's something that we have to find ways to motivate our high school students to really take that test seriously, because if you look at the state percentages overall, they're very low, especially in grade 11. And that is because the students know they're gonna graduate, and they really just don't take that test seriously. So they're not even responding. So it is something that we have to look, really motivate our high school students to make sure that they take that test seriously.
Sort of director of government instruction, just so everybody knows who he is. I just can't remember his name. Some of our recommendations for English Language Arts is to explore ways to motivate and inspire high school students to apply themselves and take the test seriously. And that's not a Linder's issue, so that's not about Linder's high school students. That's a country-wide issue, the United States. Grades 5 and 7 through 11 need to build vocabulary schools due to lower scores on the vocabulary portion of the assessment. So here's something that we saw very quickly in the data, something that we need to work on, something that we probably stress a little bit more probably 15, 20, definitely 25 years ago, that just probably isn't anymore in terms of our curriculum, but it's something we're gonna focus on. And grades 9 to 11 need to focus on improving the area of narrative writing. All right, we're over to that now. Again, you'll just see again the number of students tested. We're gonna kind of go through this part, because it's just really literally the number of students who took the test. And again, here you'll see a comparison of New Jersey's spring 2017 and 2018 park administration. Probably not as high as English, but definitely increases still in math, small increases. All right, now I will see Linder's 2016, 2017, 2018. You'll see improvements in grades 3 through 8. You'll see equal in grade 8 in terms of comparison of district to cross-state. And you'll see slightly lower than, again, it's an average overall score, it's not percentage points, in terms of Algebra 2 and Geometry in high school. 7 points lower, 6 points lower, 4 points lower, 4 points lower. Again, that's a trend throughout the state. Again, not to say it's not something we need to focus on, it is, but it's clearly a trend throughout the state, specifically in those two tested areas, Algebra 2 and Geometry. Sometimes Algebra 1 could be a little skewed, because you have eighth graders taking Algebra 1 as well as ninth graders. So sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad. All right, this is the Linder's comparison. So again, let me read these numbers off top of mine right from here from 2017. Grade 3, this is actually the percent increase from 2017 to 2018 of students that got Levels 4 or 5, a percentage. 13.9% increase in grade 3. 10.5% increase in grade 4. 14.5 point increase in grade 5. 2% increase in grade 6. 8.7% increase in grade 7. 1.2% increase in grade 8. 11.9% increase in Algebra 1. A little dip in Algebra 2 and Geometry, 9.8 in both of them. Again, an area we have to work on, Algebra 2 and Geometry, but nothing, nothing that we can't, you know, fix really quickly. Here's the district comparison, okay? Memorial, Lincoln, Jefferson, Roosevelt, LHS, and the state. Again, math, again, across the board throughout the state is an area that we want to work on. It's an area that's a focal point for us. We've got a lot of new programs for all our students and a lot of diverse different backgrounds at different ability levels, and we're gonna keep working on it. Go ahead. All right, here's some important things to note. 7 out of 9 grades increased the number of students who were college or career-ready in Level 4 or 5. 4 of these grade bars double-digit A's. These grades are also outperform the state average, although the number of students receiving a 4 or 5 in Algebra 1 improved by 11.9%. The number at the high school decreased slightly. Roughly 40% of our students are not on Levels 4 and 5. Many students at the high school left courses on the test blank. We're back to the city problem as ELA. Again, there's only so much we can do in terms of holding it over somebody's head, and it appears they didn't even attempt to respond. What are we gonna try to do? Again, some things are similar to ELA. We're gonna explore ways to motivate and inspire high school students to apply themselves and take the test seriously. Some ideas we have might be considered corny for a high school kid, but if we could motivate them in any way, you know, there's still lots of things like that. Sometimes people think they're not what they are. Are we teaching to standardize as a skill? That's something we have to think about. We have standards, but are we teaching as skill within the standard? Does our instruction consist of teaching a skill by memorizing facts, procedures, and rules? We wanna make sure we address every area. How can we gear instruction towards understanding why or not how? Okay, so we're looking at big picture, we're looking at the process here. As many of you know that have children, I mean, I already see it with my, my oldest is only first grade, but I already see it with my nephew who's in 8th grade now, and I don't know some of the things that they're doing. I have to really look at it a little closer sometimes. It was not my major math. I always thought I was okay at it, but it's getting a lot harder. It's a lot more about the process as opposed to the solution. Are we targeting our instruction to simply approach what the expectations? We wanna rise above those expectations. We don't just wanna, you know, if we're talking about a course, we don't just wanna be 500, we wanna go above. We wanna, you know, shoot for as high as we can. And how can we raise the bar to meet the expectations? All right, questions that we use, that we use park data as a tool for reflection. So this is for math and ELA. All right, what does this park data identify as the strengths and gaps that exist in our curriculum and instruction? So one of the things that we're doing at our PLCs, that's our professional burn communities, that's when our teachers stay a little late certain days in a month. That's when we have four-hour days sometimes. A lot of those days are probably not gonna be the most exciting days, but we're gonna get a lot of work done. We're gonna rewrite a lot of our curriculum, we're gonna redo a lot of our curriculum maps, and we're gonna make sure it matches what we're doing, exactly what we're doing in the classroom. According to this park data, what areas are needed improvement or enhancement within our district's curriculum? How will we address these now? How will we address these in the long-term strategic plan? We have the County Office of Education coming in November. They're gonna check a lot of this stuff. We're probably not gonna be finished with everything, but it is good sometimes to have that oversight. Sometimes when, you know, your, your scores are through the roof and you're exceeding expectations all the time, you may not have that oversight and know exactly what the most recent trends are. Luckily, in that regard, we get that information right away. So it's a good thing in terms of that. Obviously, we would like to get to a point where we have to search a little bit more for it, but we get it right away. How will we provide additional resources and support for educators to meet the learning needs of all of our students? What are these resources and needs of support? So one of the things I know the board talked about before I even started is not changing the day-to-day, and I'm gonna say, you know, the district has a deficit, but we don't wanna change the day-to-day, what parents feel their students are doing in school, what students feel they're doing, what teachers have added in their arsenal in terms of tools and resources. We want things to be exactly the same, and we're hoping that they can be exactly the same. And that takes a little thinking outside the box from ourselves, Mr. Corso, Mr. Pilar, or the principals. So it's important that we try as hard as we can to make sure nobody feels like they're missing out on anything. And we're gonna make sure that happens. The additional resources, student test reports will be sent home. They should have been, if not this week, next week, towards the week after. But within the next two weeks, if we have to proceed them very soon, they're going to be. You'll see specifics. These are two different websites you can go to. One is a PDF, it's a family guide for information on student reports. The other one is Understand the Score Reports. The second one, UnderstandTheScore.org. And UnderstandTheScore.org, which will lead you to a lot of different things. You can actually see problems that students do on the park based on specific grade levels. It's actually pretty cool and kind of see, especially if your child's in that class. Once you get into those upper elementary grades, they get a little hard, so you may not wanna do it in front of anybody, but you can definitely test it out and see how you do. So you'll see, they do a very good child explaining, you know, you'll see this child who needs to get to a 750 to get to Level 4. They'll say on the bottom, your child's score is a 745 or at Level 3. This is a student that can get to Level 4 very, very easily. There might be some, some areas that we can see that are weaknesses that we can address right away. And this student can definitely shoot past 750. So a lot of times we wanna focus on those students, those students that are very close, either just passed or are very close to passing. Obviously, we want to also focus on the students that are two or four years behind. And we never wanna leave out the students that are, unfortunately, sometimes get tossed to the side, students that are above and beyond the gifted students. We don't wanna miss out on the lead, and we wanna keep pushing them to move even higher. So we have to think about all those three different areas. Students that are on the cusp, they either just passed or bypassed. The students that are, I'd say, a year or two or more behind, as well as the gifted students who unfortunately sometimes are very easy to overlook. Okay, we don't wanna do that.
We're gonna move next to the DLA, which is a different assessment, which we'll get into. But I just really thought it was important for everyone to know that, you know, I've been in the district now almost 10 years, and I think this year was probably some of the best games we've seen in recent years. Our teachers have been working tremendously hard, I think, for the first time. We've had double-digit gains in both LA and math. Last year, our math scores were really not that good, you know, district-wide, but also across the county. This year, we saw an 11.9% increase in our Algebra 1 scores, which is phenomenal. We had a teacher in 8th grade who got 100% in her scores, which really is just unheard of. So I think it's really important to just mention, you know, you know, I know there's been some negative things swirling around the district, but the truth is, our teachers are working tremendously hard every single day, and I think our scores show, and I think they've been around the world. You know, we're definitely striving, and you know, everyone's working tremendously hard. And it's just great to see the hard work of the board of the district really showing in our scores, because again, these are some of the best games we've seen in recent years, and I think it's just really important to mention. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corso. Please look at the scores on the website, especially as we're at this main tonight. Please check it out again. If you came in late, district information on the homepage, and the report will be up there. So basically, some students can't take the park for various reasons. They may have an IEP. That's usually the reason why. Some students that can't, that even with modifications and accommodations, still can't take the park assessment. So we've altered assessment for students with the most significant intellectual disabilities. An English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science is called the DLM. It's Dynamic Learning Maps. The student, so basically, we have four. The student demonstrates emergent understanding of an ability to apply content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements. Student's understanding of an ability to apply targeted content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements is approaching the target. These are different areas, emerging, approaching, and then you wanna obviously be at target, which is the student's understanding of an ability to apply content knowledge and skills represented by essential elements is at target. And then advanced understanding, the student demonstrates advanced understanding of an ability to apply targeted content knowledge and skills represented by essential elements. Those are the type of students we would like to think at some point may be able to take the regular assessment again at some point. Overview of Linder's Public Schools' DLM students. Again, this is just a number of students, nothing exciting here. You'll see there is a large number of students. There's 2 in 3rd grade, there's 2 in 4th grade. I'm sorry, 1 ELA, 1 math, 1 ELA, 1 math. So usually, it's about half for each area, because most of them are taking both or all 3 in some areas. Go ahead, Mr. Corso. Again, so you'll see now here, 2, 4, 7 students emerging in ELA, 6 approaching target, 6 at target, and 4 advanced. Those are, those are, those are good scores. Those are good scores. Math, you will see, I'm doing some quick math with my hair, 10 emerging, 7 approaching target, and 5 at target. Nobody advanced in math, but we're good. And for science, only the 3 grades that took them, 5 in 11. 8 emerging, 2 approaching target, and 5 at target. Okay, purposes of access for BLLS 2.0. Students that are considered ESL students, English as a second language, a lot of them will take the access test. And I'll just read a little bit about that right here. It helps students and families understand students' current level of English language proficiency along with developmental continuum. So again, if students worse, and it's rare that they do, because they probably wouldn't be the parameter, or the teachers do an excellent job of this area, they will not need that program anymore. And that's what our goal is, to get them out of that, out of the ESL program. It serves as one of the multiple measures, so there's not just this test. That also, access is not the only thing, access or all, I'm sorry. To determine whether students are prepared to exit English language support programs. It also generates information that assists in determining whether BLLs have attained the language proficiency needed to participate meaningfully in content-oriented classes without programs work. And just, you know, BLLs, English language learners, that's what they're called. Provides teachers with information they can subsequently use to enhance instruction and learning in programs for their English language learners. So they take this test, their general teacher may get some information that could help them in class. Provides districts with information that will help them to evaluate the effectiveness of our own ESL or bilingual programs. We don't have a bilingual program. A lot of the larger districts have bilingual programs, in Jersey Cities of the world, the Norks, the Addisons, where actually receive instruction in another language. We fill out something called a bilingual waiver, as most districts do, our size and even a little bit bigger than us, where we don't have to have a bilingual program. So not every school has a bilingual program. Go ahead. Again, this is something you can look at as you go on the website. You'll see the different students in our buildings and what their score was. So for example, you'll see a kindergarten student up top with a score of 5.6. People wanna get a 4.5. When you get a 4.5, we can, it can be a strong measure to have a student exit the program. So that's, that's important. Obviously, you see a lot of numbers below 4.5, and again, that's why they're in the program. Here's your upper elementary here, Jefferson, Lincoln. Again, scores. I think we have one that's over 4.5. And then our high school students finishing off. Again, you know, you might look at high school scores and think, wow, some of those shouldn't be high. But remember, this is, a lot of times, a very transient population, recovering from another country potentially, where in school in the United States for the first time in the middle of 10th grade. You know, never starts September 1st like it should be in a perfect world. And our teachers do an excellent job of dealing with this and getting students to the levels they need to be. I've seen students, you know, teachers and students that have made huge increases from, let's say, 10th grade entrance to graduating in 12th grade and speaking the English language fluently. So it's amazing what can be done in these settings, and it's not really the whole day, it's only a small amount of the day, so it's amazing. All right, does anyone have any questions for anything they would like to give us, like us to give additional information on? We can give more information and present that at another meeting, or you can email us if you have a specific question about your child. Your first resource should be your child's well-in-principle, their teacher actually, well-in-principle. Once you get those score reports, guidance counselor, if they have one, and a lot of the upper grades, it's usually a valuable resource, so make sure, you know, you utilize those resources. Does anybody have any questions in regards to these reports or something else they can watch the show? Mr. Corso, I would like to give a lot of information, yes?
How would you assess my SAT scores?
We can, we will report our SAT scores at the next meeting, yeah. But in our performance report, I can send it to you. If you give me an email, it'll, it'll show our SAT reports. If you Google "New Jersey School Performance Reports", they don't happen off the top of my head. It'll show you how they're on the SAT, if you can compare it to the districts. It's also been the NJ Monthly Report, but the high school did very well on it, went from 190 to 130 in terms of being ranked. SAT criteria is a big, SAT, ACT is a big piece of the Bible.
Yes, for the parks, it said many high school students, many sports, many, 10, 5, 20?
You know what? So it's a hard thing to answer, because, you know, just think of some time you've taken a test at high school or whatever level you had, and you may not have finished, just, and you were trying, you just may not have had enough time versus somebody who just says, like, I don't think I need to do anything else, because I'm being a...
And we're digging into that a little bit further, because basically, we'll be saw, we'll look through reports. We saw that a lot of students in high school just had zeros. You know, so for us, it's like, okay, did the student really get a zero? Did they write something? So it's definitely data that we're starting to sort through and then try to figure out a little bit more about. So, you know, at our next county roundtable, we're gonna kind of all sit together and kind of figure out, you know, what other districts had similar results and kind of dig into those individuals' tests a little bit more. But it's just definitely something we wanna take a little bit of a closer look at. Did the students give a response on the writing error that was so off-topic that they got a zero? Or did they just not really write anything, because they really didn't feel like they have to? So it's just really something that we really wanna dig into. That issue, we really took notice. I think because, you know, now that we're really starting to make these strides, we really wanna start honing on exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it, so that we could really tailor our instruction, you know, to meet, you know, meet those students.
So the numbers are 700 students?
Yeah.
What scale? Can you see it?
Yeah, so it's hard to say, because every single grade in every single subject has a different scale. So I couldn't say that 8th grade Algebra 1 is 760 for a 4. In 4th grade, it could be 740, because once they look at all the students that take that assessment, they decide a scale. So when you get your individual student's report, on the bottom, it will tell you what those scales are and where they fell. It'll be different for every grade level and every subject. A letter of recommendation for the students for ones that are taking it seriously? Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I mean, you know, we're looking at a lot of things. You know, it's a junior, a lot of the time, we saw, you know, those zeros happen in 11th grade. So, you know, we're looking at some of the senior privileges and some options that, you know, those juniors get as a senior in high school. So say, hey, listen, if you're not taking, you know, your, your education seriously as an 11th grade, or what are some of the things that maybe you're not gonna do as a senior? And definitely look at some different options, because, you know, unfortunately, yeah, they may have gotten into that great college already, but then our scores are suffering, and that impacts the district. So, you know, we definitely have to look at every option possible to motivate, you know, our students.
We're looking at how, as far as numbers that run on, there's a name, test 2. But I know my children, in the 3rd grade and 5th grade, that are free, that are doing it, do the same exact homework every single day in Manhattan Valley, in 3rd grade and 5th grade. And now they're moving on, so I wanna see what they're able to entail. But was this all, since we started in the park, like, this is why we do the same homework every single night?
Like, you mean exactly same or similar?
Well, it's pretty different, but it's a rotation from man and daughter, exactly the same, over to 3rd grade, that are three children. And now, yeah, they don't, because that's what we're doing.
So a lot of the concepts spiral through. So, you know, we shifted our math curriculum a few years ago. So, you know, the idea is, you know, a concept that you might see in 3rd grade, might be a very basic algebraic concept, then we're building upon it 4th grade and 5th grade and 6th grade. So it may seem like a very similar concept, but it should be scaffold really to what grade level that student's on. I wouldn't be able to, you know, say, you know, right now, you know, what the difference between 3, 4, 5 is, or that incident, you know, per se. But if you reach out to me, I can take a look at it. But basically, that would be the concept, is that, you know, a student in grade 3 is gonna build upon a concept in 3, 4, and 5, and it should spiral through, so that the older they get, the more fixed the concept gets. You know, that, that would be the idea. And I think, you know, again, for, you know, we've been making steady gains, but I think this year, we've seen the biggest gains that we've seen in, you know, in some time. I think if you really look on the district website, you look at the scores, and you see some of the grade levels and the percent gains that they made were really tremendous. You know, we have, we now have grade levels that are getting 75 and 80% in Level 4 and 5, which is college, you know, college or career-ready, where a few years ago, we were 40s, 50s, 60s. For us to now be the 75 percentile, the 85th percentile, I think really speaks volumes to the instruction that's happening in the district. So, you know, we're really excited about the results, and again, we just wanna build upon those and, you know, just keep moving forward.
And if I could just go back to the question about the individual students and how many? A lot of times, we'll look at, and I know here from when I was a middle school principal not that long ago, and you see Jordan Corso, like, he got an 2, and you just know he should have gotten 2. So whether he didn't take it seriously, he was having that, so those are, again, some of the little things that it takes us a while to kind of call like scrubbing the data, kind of really digging deep. And as far as, you know, I talked about earlier, I love the fact that our teachers, and I really do, are not robots, and not just teaching to the test. But in saying that, we're definitely having to prepare our students for the test. But I always tell people, until the state stops measuring us and putting this into paper and showing that this is like basically the most important things in a lot of areas in terms of being went to a teacher's evaluation. in terms of being winged to a teacher's evaluation, being winged to a principal's evaluation, then maybe we'll ease up a little bit, and maybe do some more, you know, outside-the-box things. But in saying that, our teachers should do an excellent job of doing outside-the-box things, our administrators do a great job, so it's a fine line, preparing them versus, you know, not teaching them to pass, if that makes sense. Anybody else? Please, I encourage you, like I said, reach out to your building principal, there's a lot of resources there. Start with your teacher, especially in the younger grades. Counselors, high school counselor, building administration. By all means, you can already know that for a reason, so ask us if you have a question, and we'll try to get to you as soon as possible. But again, I encourage you on the state website, I encourage you, another good resource is the School Performance Support, to look at things beyond, you know, park from last year. So, the School Performance Report that you'll see from last year, last spring, will have 16, 17 scores, 16, 17 things on attendance and on what we offer in high school. And this spring, what you'll see is these part scores and other things related to different statistics that we look at in terms of the district. And they have a nice, like, summary page that really breaks down a lot of the stuff, it's like a one-pager, and then you can dig deep and do it, and 200 pages of stuff too. So, New Jersey School Performance Report, you can just look up Lynnhurst, you can go by school, you can go by district, and then you can get a lot of good information as well. I'll probably put a link on the website as well on the district information, so it's easy for you to find. Thank you.